All right, we'll call this meeting of the South Burlington School Board to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. And I'll start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, I will move to any amendments to the agenda, David.
No.
All right, so we'll move on to city-school collaboration.
So, as the board knows, Elizabeth and I, about every couple of weeks, we meet with the city officials, Kevin Dorn, the chairman of the council. We met this past week, or this week, and we did talk about just kind of some voting consistency between voter information consistency, I should say, around how we present our information, both on the city website and the school website. So that's in process. We believe that to be really important. And last year, as you know, actually, we took some good hints from the high school website on the voter button, and we had the red voter button that worked really good that brought people to able to get information about the budget, about absentee ballot, et cetera. So we want to make sure that that activates, not just for our site, but for all sites. So that will be a charge, and that's a result of our conversation. The other part, and again, the board's heard this before, you know, master planning and visioning work is shaping too. And we've had conversations about doing our work collaboratively together, thinking about both city and school. And so that work is, again, Kevin and I have updated Elizabeth and Pam. We're just working with Frank Locker, who did our work eight years ago, and trying to get that scope defined a little bit more. And we'll be back informing Elizabeth and Pam, and then the rest of our respective boards. So, that's all I have on the kind of the city-school update. We have a lot going on, but certainly on the night like tonight, there's a lot going on with the plows. We are happy to see everybody here making it, so.
Good. All right, we'll move to Agenda Item 6, an update on the methadone clinic.
So again, I, just in general, if people know that we've, we're still in the appeal process, we are awaiting information from the Supreme Court on where that goes. And so, we're in that kind of holding place, and we'll keep people informed. Again, I think there's a fair amount of other things, but are not necessarily directly related to the methadone clinic, that is, the safety zone discussions that we've had. The board continues to be interested in being informed and informing that process in the city. So that's ongoing, but again, it's interconnected, but not directly connected to the methadone clinic, those particular pieces. So, that's all we have at the present time.
Okay, good. We'll move on to Agenda Item 7, the fifth grade transition plan update. And can I just get an idea, a show of hands from the public, who's here to talk about or hear about the fifth grade transition? Okay. Just to manage expectations a little bit, this was intended as an update, but I really want to respect the fact that we have some community folks who made it out tonight. So, we'll, after David's update, we'll allow for some time for some comments. We do have a pretty tight agenda, but again, out of respect for the fact that all of you made it here tonight, we'll try to work your comments in at this stage. All right? It's not, this is, Agenda item wasn't intended to be an exhaustive review of pros and cons, but we'll allow our superintendent to give an update, and then we'll open up for some comments. All right? Thanks.
So, thank you, Elizabeth. And again, thanks for coming out. Today was a tough day even around, you know, making those decisions about the weather. So I know anytime people get in the cars on the night like tonight, I appreciate it. And I also want to just say, I appreciate the emotions and sensitivity around, you know, big decisions. What that means to me is that we have a very caring community that cares a lot about what I believe is really, really important, that's our children. Let me first just start out by saying a couple of quick things. It's, I would say, not often for me, but sometimes I make those wrong or misinterpreted words. And so, the "done deal" word, I want to kind of let you know that it was a poor choice of words on my behalf, because so many things in the work that we do are never really done deals. It's all about, you know, communicating and collaborating. And those are always takeaway points for me, when you talk with the media, you know, you kind of get trapped into some of those conversations, and then they get reported out and misinterpreted. So let me just start out by letting you know that those were poor choices on my part, and I apologize for that. What I want to do is just give you a little bit of an overview of kind of where we're at, and as Elizabeth said, you know, the board may have questions for me as well, because again, they're part of this too. They're really hearing this for the first time, in many ways, kind of as the rollout happens. So, these are kind of the whys and the whats for me, and I want to just read for you a little bit of my thoughts. So, why would we want to do this? Create a proposed transition plan that would allow for a successful move of all of our fifth grade students to the middle school for the 15, 16 school year. Four committees, curriculum, infrastructure, community outreach, and steering would be formed to allow for additional feedback to be collected. This feedback will assist us in identifying all of the needs to ensure the most effective and smooth transition. If the feedback collected that's shared does not support what is in the best interest of students, then this idea would not be recommended to move forward. Important. The reality is that there are really many, many models out there and configurations. School systems have a variety of models, such as the K8s, the K2s, the K5s, the 35s, the 68s, and the 58s. There are many examples of successful 58 systems in our neighboring school. As your superintendent. Providing the most appropriate opportunities for students enrolled in the South Burlington school system is my desire and remains essential to my administrative team. It is because of this driving desire to support what is in the best interest of students that the fifth grade transition is being recommended. This idea was arrived at following a review of research, lengthy discussion with the entire administrative team, and with the idea on leveraging current resources within the district. I don't, again, part of that research, I think, is important, and I want to make sure people have that available. I just want maybe a couple components, Stuart, that we've used in our research, maybe if you could just cite a couple of those pieces. And Stuart Weiss is our Director of Learning, and I just asked, maybe if you can give a couple pieces of that research, Stuart.
Sure, I'm going to focus on two things in particular this evening. One is that research on middle school students is really looking at students who are what we call fifth through eighth graders, 10 through 14-year-olds. And they're in a lot of configurations, and a lot of that research points to that the opportunity to be in a middle school environment for fifth graders is a great opportunity. And in fact, most times, students get education in the facility that they're in, kind of how that facility does. So if sixth graders are in elementary school, they're treated like sixth graders and not like middle school students. And that's generally what happens if you have a five, a K5, is that they're treated like older elementary students as opposed to younger middle school students. Middle school allowing for a lot of opportunities to explore deeper, to have a deeper sense of curriculum. So, a lot of the research is about what's the most appropriate educational setting for kids fifth through eighth grade. And as David said, you know, a number of schools around, whether they're a K8 like Welliston that has a 58 program, or whether they're 58s like Camel's Hunt, for example. So, a lot of configurations has to do with what was in the community, and then within them, people make other arrangements. And the other piece for, I want to point out, is the opportunity to be in a, for kids in the middle, to be in a school more than three years. You know, to build a community that comes with, the elementary's right now with really a six-year, and the high school with a four-year, that in three years, a very short time, you're coming in and you're going out. And four-year helps build. And finally, just touching on the looping research that shows the ability for our 56s to be together like our 78s, having the same teachers for two years, there's a lot of good research coming out about the benefits of looping. I do have, and I'm going to put up for people to grab, I'm not going to take the time to pass it out, a lot of links to a variety of research, and I believe the board has the links already, and they're packed, but I'm going to put this out so that people, if they want on the way out, they can grab them, and they can go online, and they can look at some of the research.
So again, I appreciate, again, just that. I think I want to be really careful here, there's a research that can go in many ways. It's about what's best for our community, and so, you know, I don't want to go totally down the research path either, but part of it is, you know, you ask us to be administrators and try to do what's in the best interest of kids. And so, that information obviously helps us to inform. The four main reasons for this proposed recommendation, I just want to highlight those for you. And Stuart hit on a couple of those. Increase the number of years students are at the middle school, from three years to four. This additional year, I believe, will result in creating an increased sense of belonging and community as a result of improved academic outcomes for the entire 5 through 8 experience. General factors about our current configurations, as you probably already know, that our students are in our elementary schools for six years. Students at the middle for three, students at the high school for four. The move would result in students at the elementary, four, five, here, four, and at the high school remain at four. And again, those studies show that those transition times are important for kids, particularly in the age population of 10 through the 14th year of age. And so, again, that information and some of the research that's been provided speaks specifically to that. Point two, fifth grade students would benefit from a looping strategy similar to what currently exists in the seventh and eighth grade model. This would provide increased focus on our core curriculum, particularly in light of some of the newer things that are happening and coming down the pike around the common core, where it's much more focused on those particular areas of learning. Point three, grade five students would receive world language, expanded music instruction, greater access to technology, among other benefits, and would also allow us to leverage some of the other resources that are in the district for developmentally appropriate practices. So again, there's some research specifically, middle school task force, that speaks to some of those particular pieces around language, around other related experiences, around music and the arts. And then fourth, allowing the elementary schools to evaluate and repurpose the space that they currently have, or would have as a result of the vacated space by fifth grade. Often, many schools are, some of our elementary schools are tripping over spaces defined for some additional academic areas, for project spaces. We have schools-out programs, we have the opportunity to do a variety of things. And so, there's an opportunity to repurpose those spaces. Some other opportunities, you know, that I think can be considered, but again, this is all part and play of what I want the committees to be working on, would be that allowing our elementary school students to, again, stay connected to their older population. Those fourth, or the fifth through eighth grade students, interpersonal relationships we know are critically important. We know that we're seeing some of that information, and as we get assessment information back from our sixth graders. Again, there are fifth graders that went to sixth, and so, we've definitely had the opportunity to listen to their responses. Obviously, clubs and sports and some of those other areas that we know in our ends around dispositions, personal development attributes, we know we can perhaps engage additional opportunities for those students as well. And again, the looping experience, I think, has some pretty significant benefits. So let me get to the when. So when would this proposed transition occur? The plan would be for the 15, 16 school year. So it's not next year, the proposed is for the following year. And I want to be really clear that the date was purposely picked to allow for the committees to do the work and provide the feedback necessary for a good decision to be made. And so, while I think in some cases, when you hear about a decision, and it's going to happen next year, and we're going to talk about it, people often feel like, we aren't really going to have a lot of time to talk about it. In this case, I value the input that the committees will bring, I value the information that will be shared, and I then in turn will share with the board. So, let me re-highlight the committees. Four committees will be established. The committees are curriculum, infrastructure, community outreach, and steering. The steering committee will have their first meeting tomorrow night, tomorrow afternoon, actually, 4:00. And will be helping to organize and plan for each committee. Those will include times, dates, locations, and committee expectations. Each committee will have different focus and charge. However, all will evaluate the opportunities and concerns specific to fifth grade students transitioning from the elementary to a 5 through 8 model. The steering committee will also have the responsibility to assist each committee, again, keeping them informed, posting out frequently asked questions, so that the other folks who are not on the committee, who might have wanted to be on the committee, can follow along through an online process by which that could happen. We know we've gotten a fair amount of frequently asked questions, as the email went out, it asked for folks that wanted to be on the committee, and what they would bring to the committee, and as a result, we've gotten a lot of good questions, as well as other questions that have come in through different correspondence that we've kept track of. And so, my plan is, is when we form the committees, those questions will be given to the respective committees, and the committees will have the opportunity to work on those. So, again, I think from my perspective, you know, this is, these are important decisions. The board asked me to work hard to do the best that I can for students, and what's in the best interest of students, and I know parents, moms, and dads, and guardians do the same. And, you know, this is not one decision that I take lightly. I feel I understand, I have children of my own, we have, I pass the halls of children's on a regular basis, and the administrative team and I, you know, stand united in trying to do good things for kids. And so, and I'm happy to have some of them here, actually, which I wasn't aware of, but I appreciate we have some high school presence here, and obviously, middle school, and I'm very appreciative of them being here as well. So, I'm happy to take on questions from the board, or whoever.
Yeah, let me ask if any board members have specific questions for David on the, on his proposed transition plan. Okay. Great. So in, again, with respect for time, I'd like to perhaps use, if the board is in agreement, maybe the next 20 to 25 minutes will keep us on our agenda, no more than that. So I would just ask if people stand and kind of identify themselves, and try to limit your comments to about two minutes or so. And if somebody has said something that you agree with or is repetitive, if you could try to avoid redundant comments and just indicate agreement or consensus with another speaker's comments, that would be very helpful as well. So with that, I'll just take by a show of hands, who would like to speak? Yes?
I have a couple of questions.
I'm sorry, could you identify yourself first?
I'm Melissa O'Brien.
Melissa.
When are the committees going to be announced? You, David, you said there was a meeting tomorrow, so if we haven't heard, are we not on one?
So, no, that's not the case. Good question. So the steering committee will meet tomorrow. We do have all of the compilation of all of, you know, those that want to be on the committee, a committee. And so, the steering committee will get a chance to look at that, and also understand what the charge is, and help to form some of that. So, my desire will be to try to get that out before the end of the week, so everyone will know what committee they're on, those that wanted to be will get informed that they're not on a committee, but how it will help to keep them included and informed about the process. And so, that's part of what I want to do with the steering committee, and allow them to help me to do some of that work tomorrow.
Where would the fifth graders go if the move happened here?
So, currently, and then this is part of some of the move-forward direction by me, is that, number one, I would probably be pretty, you know, absent-minded of me if I didn't think that they could be housed here, or wouldn't have a locker, or things of those natures. So, what I know is that they, there is space here, the capacity for this school definitely can handle the added load of fifth grade, and we have locations and rooms identified that could be used. And again, this has been done in concert with the middle school administration, Carston and Paul, we're here tonight as well, you know, to look at some of those pieces, so.
What's the total number of kids that are impacted?
Well, I think, you know, we could say the entire district, really, right? It would be the elementary schools, all three, changes a little bit of their disposition, changes the disposition here. Our class size is obviously the particular class size that would be affected, those students that would be. I want to say, I think positively, if we do our work well, but, you know, there's an impact to our whole district around any time we do a change, and I recognize that. And that is, in part, why I'm wanting to deploy careful, you know, a careful timeline to try to collect all of that information.
Were you asking, Melissa, how many?
How many, David, how many fifth graders?
How many fifth grade students?
In the three schools?
Yep, the fifth grade, right now, I mean, we average, I'm just going to give you in general, we average, you know, our lower school is around the 40s, 45 at Chamberlain, we're around 50s in the Orchard, and Central School about the same, 58. So, you know, we're in kind of that realm of the numbers of students that would be affected in those respective schools. And again, I want to identify them as individual schools and individual, you know, coming together. When they come here, obviously, you know, we have varying numbers of students, it's not always exactly the same number.
I have three more things I want to ask.
You're almost out of time.
Will there be a school closing, and will teachers be losing their jobs?
There's no school closing that's part of this proposal at all, or this recommendation and proposal. It's really allowing, you know, our schools to thrive, continue to thrive, in the configurations that they would be.
And the teachers?
Again, there's currently no recognized major reduction. I think that's part of the work that we do as administrators and staff around rendering services. I will say that part of my hope is that there's some efficiency when you are able to bring a school together, a class together, there's some efficiencies that can be rendered. And so, that would be my hope, and through those efficiencies, my hope would be that I could use those efficiencies, or dollars, to make sure that I can do some of the things that I'd like to see happen. Again, we have to make sure that that gets worked out. But, again, efficiency would be a major area, this is, the target of this is not to have a major reduction in force. That's not, that's not the reason. The reason is to look at the model and how we can make it happen in the best interest of kids.
And the last question is, fifth graders still like to play. They like playground structures and monkey bars. So, what's the plan?
Well, again, I don't want to get way ahead of all of the committee work, that's part of the committee work, that's one of them. And actually, you know, there's been conversations around repurposing some of the playground equipment that we have at one school that would come over here. But again, I don't want to jump ahead of the committees, the committees are going to do that work, and I think that's really important. And probably would be really important to be asked of the students if they wouldn't be making that transition, what would you like to have come with you, or what would you like to have added? So those are, again, I think, important conversations at the committee.
All right, let's move on to another individual, please. Yes?
I'm sorry, Megan, sweetie, I understand you've chosen this steering committee already, and will be choosing the other committees. Will those names be public if they are representing us? We can have access to?
Absolutely. Yep. Again, one of the things I want to be careful of is, we have a list of folks, you know, I got to make sure that they're, they want to be, whether they can then agree to the commitment before I do that. So there's, you know, there's some careful dialogue that needs to happen with them first.
And second, you might not have the answer to this, but I know next week you're coming to PTO meetings, and I would imagine, in looking at this decision, there's been some budgetary work you've done, and looking at crunching the numbers, how this will impact budget-wise. I'm wondering if you might be able to bring that to the PTO meetings next week to share how this will impact. I mean, right now, we're facing over an 8% budget increase. The things you're talking about sound good, but they sound expensive, and I'm wondering where cuts would be made in order to accommodate those things.
Yeah, I am very mindful of the budget. We're currently in that communication phase right now, that's kind of two parts of, or a part of the conversation that I'll be having with the PTOs, is one, answering questions around the fifth grade, and also about the budget, and helping to answer questions. And while I can't 100, in 100% certainty predict where we're headed in the future, part of this idea is, again, based a little bit on efficiency around rendering our services in a more efficient way for the best, in the best interest of kids. So, however, you're right, I'm going to, we're going to need the help of the committee work and look at, and see what might be the effect and desire to move this process, and what would be the resulting cost or reduction.
And Megan, I think to manage expectations at this stage of the process, I don't think there's going to be a level of specificity on next year, or the 2015 budget. And I imagine that the committees will come up with some puts and takes on that, areas that we might need to make some investments, and areas that there might be some opportunities to leverage resources to. So I don't think you'll see that soon, or sooner in the process, but there's an expectation that that would be part of the transition plan.
Before decision-making?
Well, it's hard to say, because I, well, all I can say is, the board is expecting to see a presentation and a recommendation in the July timeframe, and our budget process would be in, more in the October timeframe, but I would anticipate there would be some areas of material impact identified through the working groups. I guess in saying that, I'm saying that to David. Another question? Yes?
Is there a plan to monitor the success of the program once it's implemented?
I'm sorry, can you identify yourself?
My name's Abby Crocker.
Hi, Abby.
So, good question, Abby. Again, that's, would be part of one of the committee assignments, is that, you know, what do we know now, and what do we want to measure into the future? We know that both, we have all of our academic ends, we have dispositions, our personal development and citizenry, how are those things going to be looked at, how are we going to work to improve that for kids? So, we believe that it's a positive move, and will help that because of the work that we've done, but again, we want to dig right back into that with the committees, and let the committees help us to identify, well beyond the opportunities probably that I've already identified, and the concerns, and work through those with very specific things around, it's a, it might be that it's a current concern in our current configuration, and we know it now, how can we make sure that that doesn't continue through this possible option? So, we do want to have the data that associates the outcomes of our decisions, and so, that will be a really important part for us to nail down.
And if you don't see the outcomes that you want, is switching back an option?
Well, I think, you know, we're, I mean, I'm part of a decision-making team, I report to the board, I would like to say that there's all kinds of options. I want to be careful not to do, to make changes and then undo changes before changes have, you know, time to prevail, you know, and I think that's really important. Again, as I said earlier, I don't take this decision lightly, or this idea and proposal lightly. So, if we go that way, I want to have a pretty good, strong feeling that's then presented to the board that's the right thing to do for kids.
Other questions? Yes?
I'm Kathy Barazo, a kid at Orchard, so kids here. First, I just want to give you a heads up, I was meeting with some of the other PTOs earlier this week, and I talked to them about the committees coming up, and they were actually under the impression that they were going to apply for the committees after the PTO meetings next week. So they were kind of surprised, because I knew the steering committees had been set up, so you may get some feedback about that.
Sure, thank you for that.
I think they were told by their principals to just wait until the PTO meetings, till they got some more information, and then they could decide. So, that's just my heads up.
Thank you for that.
I have lots of other comments, but I'm going to try to keep it to just a couple. I have a sixth grader and an eighth grader here, and when I first, my, when it first came out, I also have a third grader, so she's going to be affected. My sixth grader, who's kind of a tough little nut, I don't, she's not a shrinking violet, she's gone through the transition here, she has a sister here to give her support, although she's 13 and gives her no support. But her first comment to me, when she heard about this, and before she knew how I felt about it, she said, "Fifth graders at the middle school, there's no way fifth graders aren't mature enough to be at middle school." That's my sixth grader's comment, who just moved here. And also, she has now relayed to me two different incidents here, where she has been in the hallway, where, I'm assuming they're eighth grade boys, because she calls them very tall, and anybody who sees middle school kids, most of the boys, seventh grades are short and eighth grade boys are tall. So I'm guessing, she didn't know who they were. But two incidents where pretty, not, I mean, not anything that I would go running to Carston about, but instances where she was scared by eighth graders in the school. She's kind of short, but, you know, in the hallway, she runs into them, coming down the hallway, they're making what to me would be sexually suggestive movements towards her, she is only sixth grade, so she doesn't get that. In another case where she, they just kind of scared her on the second day of school, we're just coming around the corner, and she was frightened by them, because they're tall and big. And it makes me nervous that my sixth grader is having these issues, and I'm going to have to send my fifth, you know, my someday soon to be a fifth grader little girl into the same exact situations in the same exact school. And lastly, I wanted to ask you, we're talking a lot about what And lastly, I wanted to ask you, we're talking a lot about what it means to, to the middle school to move those kids here, but I think there's a huge impact to the, to the elementary schools also. Those fifth graders are important to the elementary school. And so I'd like to know which of these committees is gonna look at the impact on our elementary schools, where there's a fabulous community and where those fifth graders are their mentors and their, you know, they're their bus buddies and they're the people who do the announcements and, you know, Orchard, everybody knows, they're the, they're the leads in our school play. Who's gonna look at the impact on the elementary schools?
Well, again, I, you know, on the impact on them, that's, that's equally important. It's, it's about making sure that we're looking at that learning community too. And so, that will be part of all of the committees, both on, whether it's curriculum or looking at the infrastructure or the community outreach. That's a critical import, important piece. I, I don't think I'm gonna hit all of your points and I, I want to make sure I, I don't make you feel like I'm not gonna respond, you know, I'm not wanting to respond to those. Certainly, the environment that children learn in is really, really important. I mean, I would like to be able to say that we want all students to be respectful of each other. We certainly have those examples of the kindergartners and the fifth graders, you know, and, and some of those similar, or the ninth graders and the twelfth. And I recognize, and again, I, so very, very important that those exchanges regardless of age should be appropriate and we need to be working with our children to make that happen. And I think there's other components of this that is important to us around, I don't think the right word is isolation, but the right kind of territory for kids, right? And we want to have kind of the fifth and sixth grade territory and the seventh and eighth grade territory, you know, that doesn't preclude them from being able to connect and see each other at other appropriate times. But we want to be mindful of that and I, I absolutely, we don't want to have a dismissal of eighth grades gone at the same time dismissal of, would happen of fifth. So, there's work to happen. And again, I'm gonna point back to the committee work to say, how would we want to have a transition? Where do we want them placed? How do we want to have lunchroom? You know, how, how, how are all some of those things need to get, get worked out? And I do appreciate the heads up on the, on the, the PTO meetings because I'm happy to go to those and I know I'm gonna get a lot of questions and I want to be able to try to answer them in a, in a succinct way. My hope is, is, you know, I've gotten a lot of responses and I've got a lot of people on the committees and I'm gonna work to try to involve, you know, as many people in the communication process as possible. I thought the communication was pretty clear when, when the emails went out, but, you know, I'll, I'll work to correct that and communicate with them.
And just as a follow-up, both instances with my daughter in the hallways, because I think they do, you actually do release fifth graders or sixth graders at a different time, most of the time.
Yeah.
Than the seventh and eighth graders. But most, most of the times, it was either she was going to the bathroom, it wasn't like she would not normally be in there. It was just instances that, you know, she had to use the bathroom or she was coming up, coming back from the library in one case. So even though they're trying to be isolated, unless you have a hallways simply dedicated to fifth graders and sixth graders, it's, you know, they're not isolated if they're in the same building and they have to ride the bus together.
Yeah.
Yes?
Hi, I'm Sandy Fleming. I have a question about the PTO meetings next week, wondering if any school board members are going to attend those meetings because I at least know at Orchard, we have a large group of parents that are gonna be attending and I feel that everyone needs to hear what people have to say. If it's just filtered through one person, I think it needs to have more than one set of ears hearing, and I know it's just the beginning, but throughout the whole process, hearing where people are starting from. And I know it's a thankless, very busy job and, but maybe you can split up or something. I know it was helpful last year when you came to talk about the budget, just to have a school board rep there as well, just to hear things that parents were, you know, pleased with and concerns with the budget. And I think same with this issue. I think there'll be a lot of parents that will want to feel heard and that's my only suggestion is that maybe have one or two school board reps to hear because I think there'll be a lot of people there and it'll be a good chance to connect with the community.
Good suggestion.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you. Yes?
So, my name's Mark Gable and I came to this meeting convinced that I could stay neutral and, and desperate to come in and hear both sides of it. But David, the email that I got through Orchard didn't sound like there was any question as to whether or not this was gonna happen. It was gonna happen. You know, you'd made up your mind and it was gonna happen. And so, you know, I'm a little, I'm thrilled to hear that you might reconsider depending on what you hear from the committees. But I'm curious why it was addressed to the parents in the fashion that it was originally because that's certainly what I understood was that this was happening by God and there's no question about it. And I don't mean to be, show any disrespect to the school board because I've met many of you out in the community, but when Mr. Young asks if anybody has any questions about this going forward and nobody has a question, I'm like, oh my God. It's like, there are so many unanswered questions and here's our school board and nobody's asking them anything.
No.
So now, now I'm having a very tough time staying unbiased. I'm gonna, but I'm gonna sit down and I'm gonna try.
Let me respond first off to, to your comment about the school board questions. I think what you're seeing is that the, the role of the board at this stage is to let the committee groups do their work and to come back and listen to what the recommendation is. So we understand that there's a lot of work that's being done by people who are gonna be much more focused on this issue for, for an intense period of time. So from that standpoint, you're not hearing all the questions that probably all of you have and all of us as parents have as well and school board members, so.
Well, along that line, Elizabeth, if I can ask, did the school board have any input as to what the committees were gonna be or what it was that they were going to, going to look at?
Not specifically on, you know, who's on committees or things like that. We really rely on, on our, on David, our superintendent, our administrators, our staff to kind of say, let, make sure we have fair representation, make sure all the issues that are coming forward are being addressed. And by way of example, David and, and his team have kind of compiled the various communications that have been directed at the board or to David directly and are funneling those to the working committees. So, anyone, any community member, parent or guardian who's expressed a specific concern, and it might be as, as specific as the socials at the middle school, it might be as broad as, you know, really define what the learning opportunities you're talking about are. Those are being directed to the working committees. So, the board members are all aware of that and we're really looking for the, for the work that will be done and the specific recommendations. And this, this may be a good time to kind of describe the board role with, with a, a program or a process like this, but this, this particular board and boards in general really focus on doing due diligence on decisions that are made within the district, largely policy decisions, but do provide a lot of oversight. So, the role that, that we have is we really expect the superintendent, we expect all of our staff to bring the expertise based on research, based on experience and need to the table such that the recommendations meet the objectives that have been defined. So, the, the dialogue where you'll hear the most board involvement will really be in that June-July timeframe when the specific recommendations are made. But there will be updates between now and then that there'll likely be some specific questions with the board. And then, obviously, as community members, you can copy the board on any specific concerns and, and that helps us make, be aware of what's going on as well.
So, Mark, and, and again, I appreciate the feedback. Again, it's important that you, I hope, are hearing my feedback in a genuine, caring way with some corrected, you know, kind of direction. I'm hoping you're hearing that. To say that the board hasn't, the board obviously has had, been the recipients of a fair amount of the, the email. And so to say they haven't been part of or hearing or communicating would be wrong. And again, it's been, in, in some cases, concerning, questioning and some, you know, supporting around, you know, ideas and recommendations. So, again, I don't want to inflate that or, or go too far into that. But, um, again.
I could just say, I mean, just, just following up. And my major question actually was answered at this point, that, that the process is gonna be full and, and it's gonna inform the decision. I, I was troubled and didn't understand a couple weeks ago or so when this was cast as a done deal because that wasn't really my, my understanding. But David has answered that, I think, tonight. It's not a done deal and we're gonna go through this process and we're gonna be informed and we're gonna judge what that decision is.
So, that being the case, if the general public and all the parents at the elementary schools could be aware of that, because until tonight, when I walked into this meeting and there's only, you know, you might consider this good representation for a school board meeting, but compared to all of the parents involved, it's not. You know, if everyone could become aware that it's not a done deal, that this is something that's being looked at, it's being studied, the possibility is firm and I don't have any doubt that you have the best interests of our children in mind, all of you. You wouldn't be in the jobs that you're in if that wasn't the case. You know, I realize that. But, you know, I, I also sit on the South Burlington Restorative Board and we get kids from the middle school and the stories that they tell in those restorative board meetings are a little bit scary, you know, for a fifty-three-year-old guy, much less a fifth grader. And so I, you know, I do have a concern about mixing fifth graders with sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. I just, for, for me, I just want to know that it's being done in the appropriate way and it's gonna happen.
And I think your point around the communication, and again, I, I don't by any means want to say this is your, your bad reputation, a representation or, or large. Obviously, we have the camera here and I think that, you know, folks will see some of this, but the opportunity to reach back out to the community or those that were on the committee and the larger communities of our schools to inform them will be important. And so that will be the work and ideas of some of the committee, like, we need to keep track of our story and tell people where we're at and what we're doing and how we're, how we're moving along. So, anyway, good point. I appreciate your feedback.
And we also have representation from the other paper too.
Word out to the community that it's not a done deal. Is that possible?
Yeah, again, what, what I think is important is the communication through, you know, the next steps through the steering committee. Again, you're hearing it, you heard me speak tonight about that and so, you know, I have some due diligence to, to explain, kind of as I read my notes around doing what I think is in the best interest of kids and asking the committees to do that hard work and, and to retract the done deal, as I said earlier. It was a poor choice of words, so you can certainly make sure that gets out and I'll do my best to do the same.
I think that would just be in your best interest.
Yeah.
Because I think people are, were, I think, righteously so hostile because this is a done deal, but this is affecting a huge amount of people. So people might be less aggressive in their.
Yeah. I appreciate that, Sandy.
Maybe for a bunch easier week next week for you.
And hopefully it doesn't snow.
And we want people to still be able to say how they feel. If they hear it's a done deal, then they're just like, well, what can, you know, they feel powerless in this situation. And so, I think, as you said, parents and teachers and community members all working together is really important.
Yeah. Appreciate the feedback.
We've got time for maybe two more questions. We'll take you and you after.
I'm Jennifer Bond. And my question is, the board, you just said that you were looking for a recommendation in July about what the committee.
June-July timeframe, I think is.
Right. So you're basically, what I hear you saying is that you're giving them from March until June to make a decision and do research and get out and do what they need to do? And then get back to the board with a decision within two months or two and a half months?
Yeah, again, the timeline, that's, that's where it stands right now. It may be that there's gonna be additional time needed. And again, as Elizabeth said, the, the kind of the important pieces around informing the next step, we have transition discussions, we, you know, all kinds of different things, including also budget, if there is budget increases or reductions. You know, the timeframe for us really starts kind of in that November, you know, October through, what I'm gonna say, kind of the January is then it has to be wrapped up. So, we may need to adjust that timeline a little bit, but it's not just gonna come to the, the June and July and say, hey, here's the recommendation. The board is, this is gonna be on the agenda. I'll be updating the board regularly and again, we gotta work out through their committees how we are gonna do the communication so people can be informed as well.
I think they need far more than two months or three months to have this transition, if it goes through.
Well, again, that, that, that may be, that may be in part the recommendation, right? So again, I want to be careful not to do the committee's work, otherwise you'd say, you know, the decision's already been made. And I want to let the committees do the work. It may be that more time is needed than the year in which we've given it or the year and a half that, that we've given it. So, makes sense.
My last question is, are one of the committee member groups going to go out and talk to schools who have the same model? Are they gonna go sit with their teachers, their parents, their administrators and see what have, what has gone well, what they would recommend, what they wouldn't? Maybe some schools totally don't like their model, but they can't change it back? Is that something that's going to be looked into?
Well, certainly, conversation with, with the committees. We do want to have some open forums. There's ideas that I have that I think the committees may want to employ a panel kind of an opportunity where you bring in some folks and it shouldn't be all just one side. I want to make sure that's really clear. But, you know, what worked well, what's not working well, what, what have you learned from it, types of things. So, there's a lot of good examples, I, I think, or examples that we can pull from. And again, it's not just the teachers, it would be the students as well. We have our own students, you know, that, you know, that sit before us tonight that also, you know, provide really, really valuable information about their own experience here in our own system. And we need to make sure we're listening to them as well. So, good point and part of the, the work ahead, I think, that we, that we deploy and make sure that gets collected. Yeah.
Sir?
Brian Midier and I have a third grader with Monica Orchard, a rising kindergartner with two main questions. I, I think one is, and maybe this is my filter, but I've just seen among the people that I'm talking to an overwhelmingly negative response to this idea. And I guess the question is, next week, if the same thing happens at the PTO meetings and it's overwhelmingly negative among the parents, isn't it then time to sort of pause without having the committees go forward because that seems like the implementation of this idea? And perhaps time to reflect and say maybe we don't need these committees to go forward? And the second question is, in a way, a follow-up on Kathy and Melissa's points about maturity and playgrounds, but when I heard Mr. Weiss talking about the research and about the educational opportunities, I didn't hear a whole lot about social development. And I remember elementary school being really fun and middle school being really hard. And so forcing a kid to go in a full year earlier and perhaps another full year before puberty, doesn't seem like a good idea to me.
Again, I'll be, I'll try to be brief. The first is really on the, you know, that PTO meetings, if they all want it stopped. And I think one of the things that you ask me, the board asks me, and I ask of the administrators, is to try to make the best decisions that's gonna benefit our children. And what I know is emotions are often high with moms and dads and, and guardians. And I want to be really sensitive to try to make a decision that's in the best interest of kids, not one that just says, you know, I don't like change and I want it stopped. That doesn't work and that doesn't work and I want, I want it to be able to be flushed out. And so, while I'm sensitive that there maybe are some ideas on why it wants to stop that might be valid, on why it's not in the best interest of kids, I want to allow the process to work. And I think that's really important. And we have many good examples that we have over the, our history of, of our school system where we've had some of these in-depth conversations and positive things have come out of that. So, my hope is that they'll endorse the process, support the process, share their concerns, share their, you know, their, their, their thoughts around positives as well and, and we'll move forward. And then the second part was really around the developmental age. We really, I mean, again, this is part and play what we would like for all kids. We want the experience to be appropriate and fun and enjoyable. And I think that's one of the areas that we're, we're wanting to focus on a little bit here at the middle school. I think we do a really good job here, but I think there's opportunities for improvement. And it shouldn't be one that maybe kids walk out and say, it, it wasn't as fun as, you know, my elementary experience and going to the high school is like, you know, wonderful. You know, we ought to have, my experience was wonderful. They may, I worked hard and I had, I had great connections with my teachers and, and staff and students. And we want to see that also be a, a place where we can say, my whole experience was just absolutely excellent, right? And so again, that, that would be the desire. And we're sensitive, again, to, to the grade configurations and the developmental age. And we want to answer those questions.
All right, well, hold questions from the community. I do want to, because we have some good representation from our administrators here, if any one of our administrators wants to take a minute or two to make a quick comment, I want to afford you that opportunity as well. So, I'll leave it up to you. I know you'll be involved through the process, but.
Yeah, I can briefly say, I'm Carson Schlatter. Most of you know me as the middle school principal. I will be at the PTO meeting, so at this point, I think, you know, I'll leave it up to those opportunities to be able to answer some detailed questions. And I want to thank you for coming out. We don't take your concerns lightly. I think that's very important. You know, I'm a parent myself, and of course, I want the best for your children as well.
David, I just think you should send out an email, like you did two Tuesdays ago, to everybody in the community that says, I made a mistake. It's not a done deal. Come to the PTO meetings, to get on committees. I think that that kind of communication is going to help you greatly, because there's how many people here? No one's going to watch Channel fifteen or seventeen or whatever. It's not going to happen. And I'm going to go talk to my friends, and then it becomes the telephone game. Well, I think they said this, but I can't really remember, because I was too busy focusing on this. I just think you should...
So again, I'll reiterate what I said earlier. Committee, I have a meeting tomorrow, and I really want to begin to, it's important that this, first you take away that this is not just, you know, David alone. This, you know, again, I have some administrators here, and I'm happy that they're here tonight, but they're also behind positive change for kids as well. So allow me to work with the committee. It may be that it is the most appropriate to get out an email or correspondence or whatever the process will be. So I hear you on that. I do want to really just be clear, though, that I want, I hope that you hear the best interests of kids, and that we want to do our due diligence and do the work, and I don't want to shut the door before the door opens, right? And so that's really important, because, and I know I've agitated some folks, so please help me in not closing the door, but opening the door for conversation around what we can do for our kids in the best possible way. With that caveat, as I started out with, with words that could have been done differently. And so I tell you that. So that's my hope. I don't want to just close the door. I want the door to open, and I know that's a careful next process, so.
All right. And I think the expectation for the community, and I know of the board and David as well, is that any course of action that we decide on, we should be better off for having chosen that course of action. And that's the guiding principle we use moving forward. All right.
Thank you for the feedback.
We'll move on to, thank you all for coming out, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Sixteen, sixteen, sixteen.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mart.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eight, our Student Representative Report. And first off, thank you for making it out tonight. We weren't sure whether the weather, whether you'd make it or not.
No problem.
All right, I'll turn it over.
So, I think you guys already know, but we had our blood drive on the twenty-eighth. It was really, really fun. I was, as I said, I was part of the group that led the blood drive. I was out all day. There was a tropical theme. It was just a lot of fun. It was my first time donating, too, so it was pretty great. We had a great success. We, our goal was sixty pints, and we got up to sixty-eight, I think. So it was really awesome for us. Yeah, that's about the blood drive. And then also, I'm also part of Dan's team, and we've had a really great season so far. We're keeping the title for winning all our competitions so far. And we just had winter heat, the dance competition here at South Burlington, and we both, we won in both of our categories as well, so.
That was in the other paper, too, right? You had a nice...
Yeah.
Congratulations. Sabina?
The boys' hockey team just had the CSB Cup, and they won that as well, so.
And that was, they were kind of underdogs here. Is that a little bit true, maybe?
Yeah, I think a little bit. But that was really exciting. It's the fourth year in a row, too, so.
Mm-hmm. Suspicious cut. Good.
Good.
So sports teams are doing really well. And then the indoor track team, which is the biggest sports team at the school, they have states this weekend, so this is their final week. That's about it. This isn't really, I guess, relevant to the whole school, but a lot of my friends have had, like, opinions about the whole fifth grade thing, which, that was kind of cool.
And give us a little snippet.
Want to share a few?
What do they think?
Um, they kind of see both sides, I guess, more so than a lot of the parents. They do recognize that the middle school has better resources, but then also the whole, like, developmental thing. And I thought, one of the women who shared brought up, like, the good point of, like, eighth graders, they're kind of scary, especially to, like, a sixth-grade girl, yeah, and just in general. But they see both sides, I guess, more.
That's great. Thanks for sharing. Sabina?
Eighth graders are scary to a fifty-nine-year-old woman.
It's just the age, yeah.
You're tougher than me. Thank you, and congratulations. All right, we'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
So one of the things of trying to check off are those things that have been on our lists waiting. And I'm looking at Diane, because she's been a pusher on trying to take some of those things off. The crisis planning, I just, you know, that's been on our piece, and I think part of that, the board maybe is wondering, you know, what are we doing in this particular area? How are we responding? And what I outlined on the report is just, you know, kind of some general things that are happening on an ongoing basis. And I'll just highlight a couple of those. I won't read all of them. But we, as you know, have a crisis response plan. We have teams at every single school, and we have them at, we also have a team at the district level as well. And they meet regularly, and for me, that's really an important piece. And we've put some formalities to those meetings. It's not like just meet and talk. And there's been some real purposeful expectations around knowing, you know, knowing where critical things are in your building, you know, turnoffs for, you know. And again, most often, the team might not have to do this, but can you turn the gas off? Can you turn electricity off? You know, can you activate certain alarms and use certain tools that are available to you? Can you do that? And so that's been really important. And then I would say the other part is our continued, ongoing support with our school resource officers and the South Burlington Police Department and the city office. And that's been really important as well. For them to be able to work with us, learn from us, us learn from them, has been really important. A couple of quick highlights, and that gets into the second part of the pieces on the active shooter process. And again, I said this to the board, I think, last time Elizabeth and I were here, with, towards the end of an evening, and the lights were off, and, you know, the South Burlington Police, they had a unit that was in here just walking through the building. And that's all in part to play of our mapping of our buildings. Every police cruiser has the maps. They're able to have them electronically on, so that when we talk about Room 104 at the high school, they know right where that room is, or hallway one, or stairwell three, or, you know, those things really, really are important to us. So we're actually taking kind of the next step in some of this, and there's going to be some training over the February break, where, one thing I did say to Kevin and Trevor is that we need to make sure we put up, you know, South Burlington Police Training, and then make sure it's kind of guarded, because we could put somebody into some post-traumatic stress situations if they're not notified. So we'll be working on that. The other part, I think, is really important, is we do what we call kind of the scenarios. And I, they're nothing necessarily great. They're kind of hard to read, because they're pretty traumatic-sounding situations, in some cases, some cases not. But what's really important is that the group gets a chance to kind of think for thirty seconds and say, what would you do, you know? And, oh, by the way, you're not here, and you're not here, and you're not here. And what would you do? And we've all been in situations where sometimes the decision-maker that surrounds you isn't there, and you need to make a decision. And activating your brain through that process is really, really important. Never will be the scenario the same, but the more we practice, the better we get. And again, I'm really proud of our staff, and in the most part, really ongoing discussions, and really helpful. And we've brought on some additional focus. The state police has started to sit in on some of our meetings as well, and they've asked if they can be, you know, also participating in some of the active shooter training. And so really important. Some next steps for us is helping to, you know, inform the students. We know that when we do some of those drills, or in the event that that ever happens, we hope not, we want to be a little bit clear about, you know, our responders and what they might look like. You know, the Kevin Greelis that everybody knows might be this, might be a very different-looking individual if he's coming into your space in an active shooter response, and that, you know, with the garb on and et cetera. So we want to do kind of a next step, informing them about what happens when. And so we take a little bit of the trauma out, while at the same time, helping them understand the importance that the responders play. Other things that we've done, again, I won't ramble on too much longer here, but, you know, we have, you know, remote alarms that were allowed, that we can press from a different location. So if the office is tied up, we have locations. We have Present Three, where we can lock the building down when it's in an open mode. Most of our buildings are in a closed mode. We have pager systems with our bus drivers, where we can page them and have them page to a building specific, without any communication that allows for rapid transport and rapid pickup, of which also the state police and the South Burlington Police Department have taken advantage of. And sometimes when there's an accident on the interstate and that needs to be deployed, they've used that and reimbursed us for those services. So anyway, there's a series of things. What I think is important is, you know, these meetings are ongoing and scheduled. I would welcome a board member, if you want. I know I got a response with some, you know, could I sit in? Absolutely. We'll put you right into the mix, and you can help also be informed as far as some of the decisions. These are scheduled meetings that we have. What I know is that the buildings on their own have additional meetings. So again, that's a really important part of that work. So anyway, I'm happy to answer any specific questions about kind of crisis response. I'm definitely left off a fair number of things, but I don't know if there's questions that the board have on that, because this has been an agenda item or a parked item for us for quite a while. So I don't know if there's any questions around what we do, or...
David, you said that there would be some drills over February vacation. Are they in buildings that have schools out or rec department programs?
No, so, I mean, the part of that is, again, they were already on top of, you know, making sure that if they're going to be doing those trainings, it's going to be probably a room-specific. It's going to be a hallway-specific, and it will be, what else, courted off? And it won't be in places where it's going to be, you know, where high traffic with recreation or whatever. So it is important for us to do the training for them, because oftentimes, when they do have to respond, if they don't know the building at all, they don't know the hallways, the corridors, and low-level lighting, then it's really, we aren't doing ourselves, you know, any great service. So this is important for us to have as a training ground, but it's got to be done at the right time, right place. So we're sensitive to the time, and we'll be watching that.
Any other questions?
Well, I just have a question. David's presented this to us, but I know that what we're doing for security is one of the policies that we have. Off the top of my head, I'm not going to remember which one. And I know we did, three years ago, an inspection. We had a committee of, actually me, did the inspection of going out and looking at the plans. I did not sit in on a meeting, but I looked through the minutes of some of the meetings and such. And I think we should probably plan on doing that again, when we come to that monitoring report.
Do we have the calendar handy, so we can check when that monitoring report is?
Oh, what?
If we don't, we can report out on it next time?
I actually have it.
Okay.
Accountability.
Is it under asset?
I think it is under asset.
Do you recall if that's under asset protection, Martin?
Agency plan, no. It shows up in one of the monitoring reports. I don't know that we're going to...
Why don't we ask then, why don't we ask David to just call it out on the master calendar and call for direct inspection under that monitoring? It's not showing up as discrete right now. If it is under asset, that is you, Julie and Martin. Your enthusiasm is overwhelming.
I'm excited to do asset protection. I think that's Dan. He's the new guy. No, I'm just kidding. We'll do it.
So of kind of the safety...
We'll just do the subset.
I think it's actually treatment of staff.
Oh, okay.
Number four, treatment, allow staff to be unprepared to deal with emergency situations.
Who's on that one, Elizabeth?
Martin.
You're on your own, Ben.
I think I expect, I mean, I'm happy to, but...
That was two-point-two, and that was in the August timeframe, so...
Somewhere anybody.
We did bring it up.
We'll have to schedule it for next.
The other part of this is that we, you know, we've gone through a series of conversations around the monitor, you know, our TV monitors, and we made some modifications to some of that as a result. So I think it's due for another look, like, yeah, so.
So we'll get it back on the calendar and maybe get some fresh eyes on it?
Yeah, it's fine.
I'm happy to do it again.
All right.
What other things are there? Because usually we sort of...
Well, we've been in the slow. We tried to be mindful of this period of time.
The budget, yeah. The next one will come up. It is actually, it's asset protection, two-point-seven.
Yeah, so.
That's next. That's Martin and I.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it should be...
Is it in the next meeting?
It really, it should be. Actually, it was scheduled here, but this actually, I think, is a little bit old. I think we moved that one down to the second meeting.
I think we moved it to the second meeting in February, although we do have a spot in March, too, so we could push it there.
You're going to send it, you ask?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, David.
And the other is just an update on the RFP. I included a kind of a write-up for you in there. And again, in the spirit of maybe getting the feedback, you may wish to, I need some direction on where you'd like to go, because the first proposal did not yield the response. And I think the other part is that, you know, the, again, the expansiveness of the push-out was not far enough. And so, again, I think that folks, I need to know whether you want to push it back out again and try to go broader and pay some more, or you want to try to do an internal with, you know, with a subcommittee type of approach either. And again, this may not be the necessary place where you can digest all of what I put together, so anyway.
Let me give the board an option. We can talk about it here, and/or we could send some written recommendations to David and carve out a public session at our meeting on the tenth for a brief discussion of next steps. So I'll leave it up to the board, and we can certainly do both.
I think we need to talk about it.
Okay. Why don't we open it up, Julie?
I'm not sure, David. I don't understand why this wasn't more expansive at the first go-around. And I, in particular, I'm frustrated that we specifically asked that it go out to certain people that it didn't go out to. And it's been months now since we... I understand there's been a lot going on, but I just don't, I'm frustrated with that. And I think it's something critical that we need to do as a board, and I think we need to decide what we're going to do, but...
Yeah. Well, again, let me first say that I thought that what we put it out to was going to yield a return, far more than it did. To say we didn't get any inquiries, we did. It may be that we need to look at the RFP for clarity, so that it isn't, that it has more of the specific focus. I think we, I think it reached a lot of people, even if we didn't specifically send it to them. That said, your specific question is around that you asked it to be broader than what it was, and I agree with that, and I own that, that I didn't, you know, check up on that and get it out to all of those other locations. And again, that was me checking in on the process. So I own that. Where I'm at now, though, is before we go back out again and do a broader search, and I want to bring it back to you folks to say, what would you like to do? We can go out broader. It may yield no return, or if you want to do it in a different way, and that's kind of why I outlined that, kind of, you know, three-part step.
Should we, just a quick question. Did we have any dialogue with those folks who inquired as to why they did not respond?
We did. We did. Yeah, I think that, from my perspective, again, the, at least from the four conversations, three different people that I had, it was more about the evaluation process currently that's being pushed out by the state is changing. Why would you be wanting to do that now, you know? Again, I think there was an overwhelming concern, questions around, you know, it's, you're asking a lot. It's going to take more time than probably what I have to do or able to do, and the scope, what is it you're looking for, was, you know, clarifying questions, a lot of that that came out. So it may be that they didn't read it in detail, you know? It may be that, you know, again, a lot of the scope was on with their knowledge about what's going on in the evaluation process from the state coming down. It seemed to be, you know, kind of the, an overwhelming, kind of, why would you spend money to... Well, again, Stuart's currently working on that for me right now. We were just talking about it.
Is it going to be one of these things that never happens?
Well, the commissioner, or the secretary, excuse me, the new secretary, presented to a leadership team last Thursday on a workshop related to Common Core. on workshop related to Common Core in which she basically implied two things. I mean, and I don't want to, you know, here I am on television and she'll see this and she, that's not what I said. But one, that it was coming soon, and two, that it was more directive than, you know, what they initially thought. I mean, she she actually said, you know, seventy percent of schools do Danielson, and for the ones that don't, we will be providing some.
Direction.
Direction and 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 training. So in the past, when I showed it to you before, there were four different models that they were looking at. And I'm not telling you that it's going to be Danielson, but it seemed to be implied, still modified, because of course, one of the big things that the state is working on and what again is taking, you know, long, is the question of what is the relationship of student outcome? Because that's the one thing that the state and and obviously, a lot of federal money more and more is tied to this question of how to measure student outcomes. And I think the big agreement in Vermont is it needs to be multiple measures, you know, so it's not going to be like some states where student outcome is based on one test. But that, of course, makes it more complex. But it could be tomorrow.
So one option might be to meet with the two or three folks that did express some initial interest and get some clarity on how they would redefine the scope to make it more manageable or meaningful. But also maybe to express an interest in evaluating our current system versus waiting for the implementation of a new system. And frankly, if it's based on Danielson, regardless of the changes, it's still, one of our goals was to assess assess whether we were compliant with our current system. So it it doesn't require that the system have been changed.
Related to that, I if we do cast a wider net, I'd like to look at the RFP again to see if there are ways to tweak it after getting feedback.
Good. Yeah, and and again, I'm happy to, you know, work with a subset of the board if that would be the desire, you know, to do any any of that.
I think I think that may be helpful, just in terms of having the board understand those entities that did express some initial inquiry interest where, you know, where the reservations may be in actually submitting a proposal.
So how many of those were actually inquiries, David? Do you, can you give us a?
Well, again, I'll I'll give you the exact number. I can't off the top of my head. I mean, I answered a lot of questions, you know, I'm interested in doing this. And the last one that I thought was going to come in, you know, but I think during the drill down period and the collection process, it became much more apparent by doing what I'm going to say, the due diligence on collecting the information or getting the information or just beginning that that framework. It was like, why would you want to do this? You know, there was all kinds of other questions that were coming up that that was, I guess, lacked clarity. And so again, I think there was initial interest. So I don't want to, I don't want to say there was an initial interest.
So it sounds like you may have three or four people that we could speak to.
Yeah, and again, I think we need to be clear if, you know, that next step in process, because right now I'm kind of on hold. I didn't want to go back out and re-invite because then we're kind of in violation of, you know, an RFP that should be done pretty.
But we could, we could have exploratory conversations.
Took to then reframe if you want.
To reframe an RFP, right?
So, you know, again, I tried, I tried to provide you a little, some clarity around where I'm at and opportunities.
This question get us to the point we might get a better understanding of what kind of response, what kind of an RFP they would be responsive to?
Probably, yeah. But I think it probably would develop a, you know, a more thorough understanding about, you know, what are all the moving parts? And, you know, you heard Stuart talk a little bit about, you know, the the change down the road, you know, we have proficiency-based graduate, you know, you got all kinds of different measures. Yeah, right. So what I'm saying is, I think that there's a good opportunity here for the board. We're working on our ends. And all of those metrics measured, there's a great opportunity, as long as you're okay to say it's proficiency-based and it's our ends. And we're not going to worry as much as about some of the some of the other tests that might come down the road that are going to be major metric measures on student outcome related to instruction and evaluation. So, you know, that that's that's really at the root of making sure that whole circle works. So I think that's a really important conversation that should be had.
I guess I have two thoughts about this subject, two overarching thoughts I just want to throw out for consideration. One is, I think, part of our struggle in trying to figure this out, trying to figure out how our performance evaluation system works. Actually, there's a lot of reasons. We're we're trying to figure out how it's fits in with our policy governments, or at least I am. And I've I've heard from David talking about, well, you know, if we're doing our ends right, you don't need to look at the performance evaluation. And I appreciate that perspective. But but it's not just the ends. I mean, it's it's a big part of it, I think, is in negotiations, actually. And I think a big part of or the performance evaluation system is also very important when we're trying to get the community to to support our budget. Yeah, because one of the issues that we keep on hearing, at least I keep on hearing, I think we all do, is regarding how teachers are evaluated and such. And, you know, and and the main thing is that, you know, I want us to have the best performance evaluation system, but we have no way of being able to really back that up necessarily, necessarily. So what that all leads me to propose is that we look close at at our policies. And just as we add it, and I don't want to add a bunch of policies, but just as we added a policy that's not really traditional regarding curriculum and that we want to understand that work's being done in curriculum, we can add a policy and monitor a policy related to performance evaluations. Now, at that level, I mean, there are two ways that we've been trying to get at this. One has been direct inspection and that's not worked, and that's why we're trying to get an auditor. The second is just having the numbers, understanding that we're actually doing it, not how well we're doing it. And I don't think we even get that on a period, on a regular basis. If it's in here and if it's a requirement, however we draft it, I think that that would satisfy us going forward, that we're making sure that we are on top of that issue. Because I I think it's equivalent to making sure that curriculum is is being done right for our communication to the public, for our understanding of what we're doing in negotiations and in budgeting, et cetera. So so that's kind of the one point. The other point is, given that, and maybe this is putting the cart a little bit before the horse, but I think that that's okay in the situation. If it's if it's us monitoring and we want to do direct inspection, I think in fact that we should probably, as a board, take over the process of trying to find an auditor for this. Because I think that's what we would do if we had a policy in here and one of the ways that we were going to look at it is direct inspection. It would be the board who is, in fact, heading that effort up. So that's kind of the two points that I I want to throw out there to ponder a little bit.
So we've got, we've got a few suggestions. It's kind of adding a policy on performance evaluations. And as a subset of that or part of that would also be if direct inspection was desired as a part of a policy, to have the board spearhead finding an auditor. And then we also talked about getting feedback from some of the folks who expressed interest in the original RFP and potentially redefining an RFP that might go out to a broader audience. So we have kind of, those are sort of four, well, I'll call it three with a subset on direct inspection.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I think, again, I'm happy to have, you know, continue to have the conversation. I think, you know, evaluation target, I think, is, you know, is probably where we ought to, where we ought to really talk. Because what you ask of me is to achieve with the administrators, an outcome and a target of student success. I don't, I think, my feeling is I'm going to be unable to be successful. If in fact you have an audit that, or let's say you 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 take over the process. If the process is done with one hundred percent compliance, but the outcomes aren't there, am I off the hook?
I don't think I'm, I don't think I'm hearing taking over the process.
Well, again, if you have an outside person come in, you know, and again, I think there's, I mean, essentially what we were doing is we're having outside person come in under my charge for for you. If you take that over, you know, I I'm worried about the blurred lines here, that's all. And 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 take me out of the equation. It's my position, the position and the charge of the superintendent. You know, I I you start to blur the lines around the outcomes, I think.
I don't think our intention is to take you out of the process. I mean, is that what you're saying?
No, no, no.
I think what we're, what he's saying is we want to take over the RFP process.
Yeah, just of the audit.
Just the RFP.
I I want to monitor, I want to make sure that, and and I think there's different reasons why we can't just say, if you're achieving the ends, I don't care how you're doing the performance evaluation, because you must be doing it right. I I don't think that's enough. I think I think there's two reasons for that. One is that we've been waiting for ends monitoring since I've been on the board. And it hasn't happened, and I don't see that happening soon. So there's an interim period there. Second, even if we were getting that, I it it goes beyond just the ends. It's the it's the communication with with the community. This is a very important issue to them. I think it's important for us to to, when we are presenting a budget to the community, that we can completely stand behind that budget. And one of the reasons, you know, that we can stand behind it is that we have the best teachers and we have a good performance evaluation system that says that we're we're improving our teachers or if they're not improving and they're below par, we're getting rid of them. That's all part of, I think, the, I think that's part of the budgeting process because that's one thing that we always hear during budgeting and in negotiations as well. I mean, just negotiating how, the the concept of how, I think, the way we pay teachers is that they get more experience, they get more education, we pay them more, so long as they are passing performance evaluations, so long as they're performing up to snuff. I don't know that we have a system in there in place that is answering that underlying foundation for how we are paying our teachers. And I think we need to know that.
I mean, again, I think what what, again, I'll take me out of the equation. Let's just talk about the position. It's very difficult for me to disengage, what I'll say, just, you know, trust and equity here, really. So take me out of the equation for the position. When I think about this objectively, you ask me and hold me accountable. You're not here every day, nor nor am I in every building, and I hold accountable the administrators, you hold me accountable. I it begins to feel that the the system begins to break down in in kind of that that trust metric. We have, again, monitoring where we're looking at our ends, we're working to achieve that, we look at those pieces. It just, you know, it's a little bit of a double edge for me, right? And and not for me about the position. And so I'm in the position to try to help you, regardless of whether it's me or somebody else, to do good board leadership, good board direction, good board governance with the community. And so I I I worry about that. We have a system. You know, we have a, we have a system. It's an evaluation system that we use and we hold accountable. I have I have that track record. Again, this is part of what we want to have, you know, that internal dip, which is fine. And I I think it gets really hard, though, to determine that it it becomes very objective around the outcome. So you have great out, you have great evaluation system and all well done. But are we, are we still going to ask the question that, you know what, I don't know if that's getting there either. So then where do we go next?
I don't think we're still going to ask the question. We don't have the assurance that it's being done well. And in fact, we have some evidence that there's some questionable stuff happening. And we need to be assured as the employer that this is getting done and it's getting done correctly.
But this gets into it as as well, is that if, from a perspective of an outsider and or a board, you're the the view of of either you or of a community member that may view that it's not being, it doesn't seem to be being done because from my first child to my third, it doesn't seem to have changed, maybe, my parent perspective. But we may be doing all kinds of things. And maybe there has been improvement, but it's just a, it's a lack of change.
I think if I can step back, I mean, the fundamental, I think the fundamental, what you're hearing, David, and I understand your point. And I think it's come to that point because this conversation's gone on so long. It's been over two years now. And this was an area that ultimately the the board interest was was two-pronged. One is, are we doing things right? So it's looking at the performance evaluation system. And by the way, it started with, you know, we focused on teachers, but it's really, it's really a district employee focus. Are we doing things right? So are we in compliance with our own performance evaluation systems? And the second part was, are we doing the right things, which really gets at the broader issue of what what changes might we have to make? And I think it's, Stuart, what you're describing, which is the next phase of performance evaluation, which looks at outcomes or proficiencies and so forth. So we actually made a purposeful decision to take that component off the table because of what was going on at the state level and kind of wait for some of that that transition. But what we kept on the table was the compliance issue of are we doing things right, which is mean, are, which means are we complying with our own system? And I think what you're hearing, David, and correct me if I'm wrong, any board members, is the board hasn't seen that in over two years. And we've been stymied in terms of each avenue we've taken. We've been counseled that the board shouldn't do direct inspection by virtue of of confidentiality and and potential board involvement in in an employee action at some point in the future. We haven't been able to, we we've worked on an RFP that we thought was very descriptive and have have been unsuccessful for many months getting a a response to that. So we're stuck in the area that we haven't been able to validate that we are compliant with our own performance evaluation system. And that's not a reflection of distrust. It's a reflection of the board has an interest in understanding how we monitor that.
Yeah, I think important for me is, you know, I I wanted the RFP to, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to have had that done and provided to you again. And I think, again, the the broadness of that obviously is a concern. Again, I think this is a good discussion. I I want to take myself out of the, you know, me, the person and the position and how to really help an organization do it right. And I agree with that. But I also want to be careful not to steer steer you or just say yes either. So, you know, I really, this is really, really important work. I think we have really, really, we've done a lot of really, really hard work. We've done a lot of really hard work with some, you know, some of our staff that have, that's benefited and or made changes. And I think we have, you know, there's a good, there's good work happening. That's not to say that it can't improve. And I know that's not really what you're you're asking. It's more about correct and done. But I'm a little, I get worried about the kind of the the mix sometimes because I, what I know is that you're the recipients of feedback sometimes that may lead you astray at times, some of you, that doesn't seem to be changing or not.
Part why we want someone to come and look at the system who's separate. And I, that's what I don't think you're, I'm not sure you understand that.
But I but I want, again, I'm just trying to be a little bit of, you know, of pull it back into perspective around what we're trying to do as a district and not not get ingrained in some of those individual cases.
And my sense, my sense is most, I, I, yeah, my sense is that although I'm sure each of us have received individual, you know, tidbits of information, that does not inform the board's decision-making going forward. So we've really talked about a performance evaluation system here and looking at our compliance with the system. So it's really independent of any white noise that individual members might be hearing relative to a specific situation.
But it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's is independent, but I would like to be able to answer, because it's one of the more most, again, most frequent feedback that that one gets is, I don't like this teacher. I don't like that teacher. Or, you know, more often than not, let me make very clear, it's, they like all the teachers. But there's, you know, people tell me that. And I want to be able to say, you know what, we have a performance evaluation system that works. And if the, and and I trust it and 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 here's what we do just generally and tell them. And so, I mean, that's an answer to it. And that that we have a system that that takes care of this. And we're compliant with that. No, I I don't. I I don't know about the the compliance.
So maybe I ought to be educating you on and just putting you through a, you know, kind of a mock performance evaluation.
Well, no, no, I think we've gone through this.
But we don't understand the system. That's that that, if you don't under, if you can't stand to a, you know, community member who might be asking you that we do have an evaluation system and it does look at four four critical domains, you know? Talk about instruction and professional development, right? It has very, very clear things in which they're evaluated on. So. So, that and of itself may, may, I mean, that conversation.
But that tells me how it's supposed to work. Is it working that way? And then that, and that, and that's, that's, that's what we're looking for, I think, in this process.
Diane, you have a question?
I just need to ask you, when you say develop a new policy, how will that get us to what we're looking for?
Well, I mean, it.
How do you visualize that?
It makes it, I mean, it makes it very clear for this board and going into the future that this is a requirement and an understanding that, that, uh, that we want to, we're going to be monitoring this, and we're going to be on a consistent basis monitoring this on an annual basis or whatever. Uh, and it may, it may be that, it it mainly is that this is the number that we set out to do evaluations. This is how many we, uh, did, and we're keeping up. It could be as simple as that, and maybe every five years, have an auditor to look at it if there's been changes, and something like that. And, and that just has to really be discussed whether we really want that. We had a lot of discussions about the curriculum aspect that we added that policy. We all ultimately thought that that was important enough to do. It, it just seems like, I, it, it also, frankly, it holds the administration's feet more to the fire. If there, if there's a policy in there, uh, that states that, that performance evaluation system has to be, has to be done well, whatever it would be, it would be in the negative. You are not to not do the something, whatever.
John?
I, I might be missing the whole point here, but wouldn't it, wouldn't this be, okay, we didn't get anybody to respond the first time. We put a lot of heart and effort into this RFP. Why don't we just expand the scope and put it back out? I mean, our office does that all the time for the audit. And they work with our office, but they're accountable to the board, the negotiator, same kind of thing. I, I, can't that just be the solution?
Well, I think, I think the one thing I'm hearing as a, as an opportunity to improve the potential response back would be to understand why the interested parties initially didn't respond. Because if it's something around how the RFP is worded or a misunderstanding about what's expected, I, I think we would, we would, at a minimum, if that's the decision the board made, we would have a better quality RFP going now, having understood why we thought three or four well-qualified people didn't respond.
And there was an expectation that they were interested, I, I, I think, right?
That's my understanding, yeah.
I could see us taking a shot at doing that first, before we think about a new policy. Just kind of look, get the feedback, look at what we've requested. Maybe it's not realistic, maybe the scope is too broad. Refine it, and then potentially cast a wider net, and then go from there. That's what I would recommend.
It's kind of in that part three of the, you know, it's in that, it's a little bit of the write-up in the, in the last part of that. And that, that kind of is the, is a recommendation to maybe come together, talk about, look at, maybe some things that we can do that don't need to be a part of the, the, the RFP that we do locally. And that's, you know, with Karen on board, there may be that kind of compliance issue can be done. And then there can be a little bit more of some connection to the, to the higher stuff.
It's just like an external, though.
Well, it's still, it's still external.
No, it's not. If it's Karen, it's internal.
Well, let's see, then we get at trust again. Then I get at trust, because I evaluate her. If, if I have information that's coming to me from her that says, you know, when she does the, the process, then I have, I have a bigger problem.
You know, it's.
Or I have a bigger, you have a bigger problem with me, I, I think. So, I mean.
It's similar, David, for me at least, to having an auditor look at our financial statements.
Right, but, but you don't have, I mean, part of that is an expectation that happens on a regular basis, right? So, there's a piece of that. But it's not every, it's not every time. And so, we, we, so that's really a verification. I'd be happy to do it and then have an auditor look, you know, you could have somebody come and look at my numbers, you know? So, Karen does it, and somebody could come in and say, let's take a look. Yep, you're ninety-nine compliant to what you said you said. You know, that would feel a whole lot better to me than basically saying, wow, if it's Karen, then it, it doesn't. So, John does the work now on the finances, and then we have an auditor that comes in and basically looks at his system and says, right on. That's a good feeling to you, right?
We need to look not only at the numbers, but at the efficacy of the system.
Right. And I know that doesn't happen, you know, as much with the numbers. There's decisions around numbers. So, I, I understand that, that more objective view. So, I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just, I'm not. I'm, I'm really, really sensitive to not putting you, whether it's me here or somebody else, in a, in a really vulnerable bucket that then you wish you had been advised differently. So, I'm just trying to be, you know.
You're asking, you're asking good questions. Can I make a recommendation? How about, we weren't going to take any action on this today, but I do think, uh, the board probably has an interest in a seat at the table in terms of having the conversations with interested parties to understand why they didn't respond to the RFP. I also think Karen is a new resource to the district since, um, we started this process. So, I think the potential to include her in that dialogue would be very helpful as well. So, I, I think maybe a, a good move forward would be to initiate those conversations with board representation and Karen. Um, understand why they didn't respond. Make a consideration whether we want to modify the RFP and send it out more broadly. And then, you know, Martin's introduced the, the notion of a policy, so I think we all have something to think about in real time. And this can be done concurrently, too. Um, but as we get more information on, uh, on, you know, the questions we're, or the feedback we're getting from the interested parties, and a modified RFP that might go out more extensively, then we can concurrently evaluate whether a policy addresses that issue.
And, and just if I, one real quick, I mean, as far as, there seems to be a, a trust issue here, but I look at this differently as far as, I mean, I look at the fact that we talked earlier, a better analogy in my mind is with respect to the security. And it's a policy. The board has an oper, an option for monitoring is direct inspection. We choose to do that, not because we don't trust the administration's doing the right thing, but, but it behooves us in overseeing the administration to make sure that we're seeing it ourselves when we can, i- in certain situations. And I find this to be kind of similar, except we can't do our own direct inspection. We have to have an auditor, so.
I, I, I realize that maybe I'm, I'm coming across a little, hung up on it, but I'm, I'm, you know, I, I would welcome the conversation. I, you know, I have that kind of hesitation. You know, when I do that, it's not, you know, personal, it's about you trying to really do your good work. And, um, perhaps I'm not as articulate as I could be. Um, I'm happy to, you know, I'm proud of the things we do. We have a lot of things we're working on. So, I'm, I'm happy for the conversation.
Delay, adopt essentially what Elizabeth suggested, and that is get a board member work with you to bring the people in, Karen, be involved. Do that reasonably quickly. And in the meantime, in parallel, maybe we draft a, a potential policy for consideration. I really don't want to see the board, personally, I don't want to see the board get involved in managing the RFP process or that kind of, I don't. That just gets too messy and in the wrong direction as far as I'm concerned. I just don't want to go there unless we absolutely have to, okay? And I think it's only a, ultimate frustration that we would get there. So, we need to see some progress in this direction, okay?
Yeah, I think if there's a board member that wishes to join with Karen and, and.
There's probably five of us that would be willing to join, but we ought to probably limit it to one.
So, I hear Dan, I don't, I don't know.
Do we want to?
Do you want to think about that, or?
Hold off? We'll, we'll hold off and maybe make that decision on the, on the tenth, on a board member. But if you can go ahead and get going on, setting up some time with.
You'd hate us to be part of the delay, that's all.
Yeah, I know.
I don't need to be a.
Tenth isn't that bad.
What's that? Are you going to be it?
No, I said not it.
Oh, you're not it, okay. Well, if anyone else excluding themselves, I'll do it that way. Okay. So, I think you've got interested folks. I think, speaking for myself, I need to kind of look at workload, so maybe I should exclude myself right now. I'll, I'll take myself off the table, too. All right.
I'll put it on the.
Good, good conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the, um, agenda item ten, the bond refunding.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming.
Thank you.
And, and Lisa? I thought, I, I thought you already vacated, but sorry, Lisa. Thanks for coming, Lisa.
Thanks. All right, the two thousand bond refunding in action is required on this.
Correct. I'll let John speak to that. Obviously, you know, um, you know, we've, as a result of some savings, we have some changes, so that's a positive thing. So, John will let you speak to that.
Right, the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank monitors all the bonds that are out there. And, um, of our one million six hundred seventy-five thousand that we're repur, want to repurpose, it's just part of nineteen million one hundred eighty thousand dollars that were still outstanding for other, other municipalities and, and districts. And, um, the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank, um, has a triple A rating. And, um, they've been around since nineteen seventy. I think some of the decisions that are made back in the seventies, this is a good one, because little, little communities can issue bonds for their work and, um, don't have to be bond rated and all that expense that goes into that. So, that, this is good. And I, I read the article in the paper today about the bond bank and, and, and other. And it was, um, interesting to see that, um, it's, it was the first municipal bond bank in a triple A rating, so. Um, but the matter at hand is to approve this municipal, uh, Vermont Municipal Bond Bank certificate as to municipal bond. And it talks about how we can use the funds. We've had Bob Fletcher look at this, and Paul Giuliani is the one who's worked for the bond bank and has, has put this together. The refunding actually happened on July seventh. And, um, every municipality involved has to have a majority of the district members and the city treasurer to sign it. So, um, and the detail, although it's a little bit hard to read if you go to the third page, shows the, um, the interest and the principal that is still outstanding, and then shows the savings. And, um, the savings will show up in, in fiscal seventeen on November fifteenth, uh, two thousand sixteen. It's about eight to nine thousand dollars per year that we're going to save on our debt service. So, it's a, it's a, and, um, the only, only, uh, expense to us is five hundred dollar fee to the legal fee, so.
John, would, would, would this have happened even if we weren't repurposing it?
Oh, this has, this, yes, this was.
They would have done it anyway, right? So, it had been done during the life of this? Have we done this once before?
No.
No.
No, this is the only time for this particular bond.
Any questions?
I just have a mechanical one.
Why, why do the savings bounce up and down year to year?
Um, it's, it's, it has to do, um, the timing of the bond interest payments. Uh, there's always a November payment and then a May payment. So, it's, uh, the principal.
They overlap in fiscal years in different ways.
The principal is only hit once a year, so it reduces the next interest payment. That's, that's why.
Does this have any effect on our repurposing at all?
No, because the, if you look at the first column, the principal we're repurposing is the same amount, one million six seventy-five.
In the budget, did we anticipate this, or did we?
We didn't. No, because, uh, there is no change in the debt service until two thousand and seventeen.
So, while it's minor, there's a small.
There's nothing in this budget. Fifteen is the same. Right.
It helps us in the out.
In two thousand seventeen, it'll help us.
Yes, yeah.
Unless there's any questions, do I have a motion to approve the bond refunding as recommended by administration?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Great.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Budget communication update.
So, at your place, you have, um, information, communication, Elizabeth's letter. Some of you may have, I may have handed out earlier tonight. I apologize for that. And the big sheet as well. So, this one is about how we're communicating, and then there's some artifacts of some of the things that are currently out there. So, Elizabeth letter, Elizabeth's letter, and then the, the big one sheet. Uh, we do have some timelines on this one sheet right now, in that, um, the, the, there is a deadline on this. It really does, I mean, we're, we're close. We need to get this done. Uh, in my brief conversation with Elizabeth, one of the things that I recognize is absent on this, and it may be a desire not to include, is the bond. Um, here, Martin, I don't know why you didn't have one there.
I think the bond has to be on there.
Yeah, so, um, clarity of language is going to be, is, is important on that. But the repurposing of that two thousand and five bond, you know, no net tax results, something of that nature, we need to probably add to that, um, was a takeaway.
Do we, I mean, did we use Williston last year?
We did. These are the exact same that we did last year. Part of that was, that was all we actually, at that time, seemed to have our hands on. We have a whole lot of other pieces of information, so we could really pick similar-sized districts and use that. Um, but then people may say, well, you know, you.
Let's not, we could choose, I mean, if we used them before, use them again.
But they aren't, you know, they're kind of similar size, Colchester and Burlington, right? And then we have Heinsberg, um, you know, and Shrelott, which are kind of different. But we used them last year, that's why we kept them on. Had they gone up or down, I think it's.
Is, is there a reason why we show the dollars in the cost reductions, but don't show the dollars in the investments?
In the, and where are you looking, Dan?
This box over here.
Okay. Um, why we don't put the numbers with it? Yeah. I mean, we, we can. I mean, we have, we put it in the budget book.
Well, it just seems to me that it's.
Yeah, we can do that.
Parallelism in the structure of it, so.
We can add the dollars into those.
So, we'll add some bond information, we'll add the dollars there. Um, this is something, why don't, maybe in the interest of time, if people could take a look at this and give feedback, uh, to David and copy John, probably by tomorrow.
Yeah, be, yeah.
So, what's the date with this versus the letter to the editor, or the letter to other paper? Are those two different weeks?
If we want this to get in, it really needs to be, it's kind of the tomorrow. I think we maybe have a little bit of leeway on this. Maybe, maybe a little bit more, but tomorrow is what we've been told. And then the letter, I don't, I don't know. I think the letter.
We didn't have timeframe on the letter, so, um, I, we talked about a letter. Do you want that to go in the following week? Would, would show up the week of vacation? Is that right?
We, we wanted this, I think, the insert.
Earlier, yeah.
To be available earlier to explain. And then we wanted something right in that week, the last week before vacation.
Okay, so that would go in next week.
The Thursday before, they don't allow anything, right?
I can't remember. So, this, the letter would go in the following week.
Yeah.
I think that, that's been right in the past, but Thursday before, they don't allow anything.
Okay, so let's, if we could get feedback.
So, the dates are on here, some of them are, so.
For this tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be, it would be good. I can work to add the bond language, so.
And then, um, I, I'd like to get feedback on the letter. And I also did not include the bond here on the letter, so I would include something on the bond there as well. And we'll shoot to get that in next week for publication the following week.
Should we give you, uh, feedback now, or, or, or how about just a couple conceptual things?
Certainly.
Just to get everybody's, I, I assume that this is the link that is because we have a length, uh, limit, is that right? There's a word limit?
You know what, I didn't even do a word count in it, so I don't know.
Well, I think it'd be more important to, to put in some of the information we have as far as, uh, on this document, as far as what the district is doing to restrain and contain costs. Uh, and we mentioned some of these here. Um, I have a more specific question on that. Have, have our class sizes in elementary school average been going up over the last three, four years? And does, does our data show that?
Didn't you give me that?
There's a table that shows.
Right, I brought that, too.
It did show elementary went up, I think seventeen and a half to eighteen point three, something to that effect.
And, and previous years, too? Or, I mean, is that the trend that we've, because I think, well, my point is that if that's what the trend is, I think that that's one of the points that, that we should make, because you keep on hearing a lot about decreased enrollment and, and smaller, smaller classes. Our trend is that we are accepting, to the chagrin of many parents, larger class sizes. So, I think that that's one of the points as far as how we are containing costs, is that we're accepting the higher class sizes.
We had multiple years in there, did we, John?
No, I took the final for thirteen as a basis.
Right.
And our budget for, for, um, the fifteen. Fifteen and fourteen had the same number of teachers and only four different, four different students, four, um, four different amount. I mean, so it's, it's a real decrease of one and a half students.
Do we have any more history?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's plenty of history.
So, if we could do a five-year history, that was one thing I noticed, some of the numbers, that looking at a five-year, um, you know, compound annual growth rate would be helpful.
Okay.
On a few of these, so.
Right.
On a few of these, so.
Right. Also, the, the other stuff I think is in this big document as far as reducing teachers and facility projects, deferred programs are an issue. So, so that was, would be one part. But the other part, I think, is that we should, in the letter, what we're doing here is explain, well, what are we getting for this investment? And, and we talk about, you know, the cohort graduation rate and those kind of things. So, and if we need space to do that, I think we can get rid of the stuff about voter turnout. I, I, I mean, I, I understand we've, we've kind of want to have that there, but that's, I mean, if we have space, it's great to have that, but I, I think the other things are more important than, than having that.
That was one of our goals, was to sort of highlight-
But I don't know that this is getting that. I don't know that, I mean, it just, I, I read this and I thought, well, yeah, okay, but, yeah, I mean, maybe it's saying, you folks in seven-three, you should be embarrassed. You only got seventeen percent, get out there. But, but it's, it's not a real clear message.
I think it's a pretty clear message.
You think?
I mean, and I think it's, it's sad in a lot of ways.
I mean, I think the other part is, you know-
Yeah, okay. Well, fair enough.
And the good work that was done on the voter, next year, you know, we would be able to have some comparable data to, to it as well.
Well, maybe it's a matter of tight, you know, see how many words there are and see what could be tightened. The one other thing I had was, we talk about some factors for why, even if we kept at zero, it'd be high property tax rate because of the state, the state factors. But I think we should, if this is in fact the case, and I think it is, highlight the fact that last year, we did, we had a two point zero nine percent increase. And compare that to what the average increase was in the state. John, is that something, I assume that that's a figure that's available, average increase in the state?
It's probably available. I'm not sure where, but I'll take, I'll give it a try.
But I mean, if, if we have this, well, this coming year, it's three point nine percent, but, you know, the reason why our taxes are higher is not just that three point nine percent, it's the fact that it was three and a half or four percent last year for the rest of the state.
Right, and we were still low.
We kept it at two point zero nine. And I think that's a point we should, you know, that, we've been responsible-
Well, I tried to highlight that on the, on the bolded part where we, you know, we're, we're even a quarter percent below the eight-year average.
But, and that's our eight-year average.
That's our average, yeah.
What I'm just saying, I'm trying to tie into why is it that, you know, two-thirds of our tax increases from the state level.
Okay.
And it's not because of what we did last year. We bucked the trend and, and had only a two point zero nine percent increase.
But you've done that over the course of eight, the eight-year history.
Right. And over the eight-year history, we've done that as well. But is that not, I mean, is that not the case? Am I reading this wrong? I, I thought that in part, why we were seeing such a, a higher tax rate just from the state factors, is how big the budgets grew last year. I mean, there's-
That's part of it.
That's part of it, though. It's not the only part, I understand.
It's also subsidy money, you know, the R monies gone away, nineteen month-
Vermont Yankee, there's a-
Right.
There's a fistful of things.
Right.
So it's, I, I don't know if it's the dominant one even.
I, I have, two people, both on my right and my left have brought up the same point, so I just wanted to clarify now. In the big, the big chart in the middle, we have salary and then we have health insurance. And we've always, we've, we've reported all benefits there before. And we got a specific question about what health costs, but should we show all benefits there?
So you mean add a line?
No, just-
Just include it in there as total.
So, so we don't have a, we don't have a line? I mean, we're understating this salary and benefits in that it only includes health insurance?
That's right.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Meg's, Meg brought that up to me at, I don't know, eight o'clock this morning or something like that. Then Dan just pointed it out, so. Thank you.
So Dan, do you think we should not point that out, the two point zero nine percent increase last year relative to the rest of the state? Or do you think that's worth still, from your knowledge of all the various factors?
Is there a way to put it, I haven't thought this, but, where, where you got this table on the other Chittenden County schools, could we include a column, the state? Could that do it?
Well, that would just be for this, for this coming year.
Oh, that's this year. Yeah, okay. You want a historical perspective on that, so.
Well, could you do it, could you do a line on this, where it says percent increase over prior year, just drop another line down that said average? Oh, that's, that's again not, oh, no, you've got four years there. So you could put a line under, under here that says average state increase.
I just don't know if that's available, is it, John?
Well, definitely the draw from the ad fund is what, how the state defines our expenses is only the net. The total spending isn't quite as available, but I'll, I'll work to see.
Okay. Well, I'll do it for a one-year period if you can get that.
Okay.
And if we can get the four years on this chart, let's just drop a line in-
Okay.
Even if we have to give up something.
I think that does get at what Martin's saying, is the comparability between ours, our, your past budget approvals to others.
To, yeah, to the state. I mean, we're doing it here for the coming year for, for some comparables.
I think we should think about taking Williston and Heinsburg specifically out of the comparisons because they're really, typically, we don't compare ourselves to them. When we look at comparable schools, we look at Essex.
Yeah, where's Essex here?
I know. We look at-
Remember, the, and we, we have, I think, you guys, we've seen a whole list of them. And so we, we have, we've been working to compile and then sharing with others. The point being here is that this is what we used last year. And so if somebody's looking at, over time, which I don't think they probably are, they're not looking at, they're not going to pull out this from last year probably, but that was kind of that transparency around, around looking.
What was available last year.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think-
Last year was the first time we did this, too.
That's right.
We should take advantage of improving it.
That's right, that's right. So we have other, John, did you want to add to that?
Well, I, I thought it was important to show Williston because they didn't have an increase in costs and they still had a seven percent increase.
Oh, that's true. That's a good point, John.
But that's the reason it's there.
I think even adding Essex or maybe substituting Essex for Heinsburg would be-
Essex Town or Junction.
K through twelve in there. Will, Williston isn't K through twelve.
Right. Yeah.
Well, the only other K through twelve around here is Milton.
Right.
Because Essex is a little district-
They're, they're, they're going up pretty significantly, at least proposed right now.
Well, you've got them all, so I may not consider adding one or two where it's relevant.
All right. That's fine. Yep.
Okay.
With regards to the letter, the only thing I would say is that it's a lot of information. And what will the average reader, when they, will they read, take the time to read the whole thing? And I would, I would just put at the beginning, the most important facts that you want people to know.
Well, I think the, I think the first paragraph and the second, that with the bold, was probably the most salient points. And then it was closing with sort of a challenge on the voter turnout side. Is there a possibility, we, we had talked about using the, the vote kind of button wherever we possible, and then also using this to direct people to the district website? I mean, it accomplishes the same thing, but can we, can we put the vote button or, or the district website on here?
Oh, on a picture, so it makes them-
Yeah.
When they open it up on the website?
Right.
So they're, they're going to get this in the other paper.
Yeah.
That's what you'd-
But, but put, put a picture of the button and the district website-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On here?
Yeah. I just photoshopped the, the red vote button in there, so we can do it.
Too busy, but-
Well, we can, I think, you know, we can shrink it down.
Yeah. And just put the website so people know they have a place to go.
Mm-hmm.
Versus just calling City Hall.
Do you want more line?
Yes, yeah, if you could, if you could maybe send that to me directly and I'll work to get that. Normal, normal submission dates are Thursday of the prior week or Friday?
Yeah. Yeah, if Delana was here, she'd be poking me right now.
So we'll work on, maybe she can-
Got to get this done ASAP, so.
Yeah, well, this will be done tomorrow and then I'll submit the letter the following week then.
Yeah, if we, maybe we can check with Judy to see-
Okay.
If there's restrictions on that, because it seemed like Rich, I don't know if it was last year or year before, had got cut down in his words.
That'll, I'll need to find that out. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so if people have specific feedback on the letter, you, if you just want to email me through David and I'll work to craft that for the following week.
And good job on your emails. I know I, I'm, sometimes I do the response, I say, oh, there's a different address in there. So I'm, I'm not trying to be mean, but I just want to make sure we're, we're doing good work, so. I even got a response from Julie that said, I'm using it.
I have to, I have to get my password first.
I had to do that.
When did it expire?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, every ninety days.
Okay, we'll move on to setting the agenda for the February nineteenth meeting. You'll have to go through that.
I made the mistake of asking for a hard copy of the tell survey.
Can I see this for a second? Yeah.
I, you should have called me about that. I would have said I didn't want it.
Well, you've got to read it now.
So you have, oh, sorry. That's what you, I just said that was a thing. So you have the tell survey coming up and the Vermont NEA is going to be here to do that. And your place, actually Julie's place, are, I believe, is that right? Are all the tell surveys, are those samples for the, each board or each school? So if you want-
If you want one, I'll pass them out so everyone can get the gist.
Yeah, so if you want, you can take one and just kind of see, they're, they're similar in their, in the feedback. So if you'd like to maybe take a school, each board member could take one school-
I'm going to pass them out.
We can do that.
If you don't, if you want to. I'm not trying to force that, but it'll give you a little idea about what's on there.
We might need a little more time on that. That was-
You think?
That was just thirty minutes. May, maybe just give it forty minutes just for, yeah. Just for questions.
Mm-hmm.
So this kind of resulted out of conversations, my ongoing conversations with the co-presidents of the SBA, so Martha Allen and Darren Allen will both be here to present, is my understanding.
Yep.
And the focus is not specifically to be, to be targeted at individual schools, but really kind of, I've, I've left it up to them in my conversations. It can be highlights, it can be opportunities for improvement, and it's probably going to be a mix of, a mix of both.
Mm-hmm.
Kind of where South Burlington exceeds and by comparison, and maybe where there's some areas that, based on the survey.
Do they know they have a half hour block there?
We're going to lengthen it up a little bit more.
We're going to give it ten more minutes for questions, but yes, they do, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know, maybe an update on the RFP then? Maybe we'll have time?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I don't know, right?
Yeah.
I want you to know that I'm not working to forget it, so I want to get it on there.
Thank you.
Yes, the tell survey.
Let's see who else, I'll just take the top, whoever I get.
So I don't know, I may try to pick one of the pieces off of the, you know, the social networking. One of the things that Karen and I did, we just, I alluded to meeting with the school resource officers, but she and I met with them and are just talking a little bit about that social networking piece. So let me see how we're, we're doing with that. There, we had some next steps for them, so we'll see. Maybe I can put that on my adminis, or my superintendent's report.
Okay.
The social networking update. All right?
Okay.
It's okay. I hate to do this, but back up to the budget communications.
Yeah.
Orchard School-
He knows he's going to be there.
The PTO, you're, you're going to be there on the tenth, isn't that, aren't we doing negotiations there or?
Yeah, I have to, I, yep.
So, so we can't have a board member there?
Well-
Or should we let one board member? Well, but Diane, you're not going to be there on the tenth anyway, so we'd be down to four board members already.
So my plan was to kick off your session a little bit-
Yeah.
And run the PTO.
Okay.
Because I need to be there. That's one conflict that I had, so, you know, that's, that's kind of the, the plan right now.
Well, do you make sure that you tell them that there's not a board member there because we're in settlement negotiations?
Right.
Because I would, I would have liked to have gone.
Wow, I, I think, I'm wondering if we need to, to think about that, because don't we only need three board members here? I mean, I understand that this is important too, but most of the representation that you saw tonight, I think, was from Orchard School, and that's that night.
What time is that meeting?
Six o'clock.
That, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
Six o'clock, right?
It's at six o'clock.
And we start at what time on the tenth?
Six o'clock.
We do at six or five?
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know that right off the top of my head. I want to say six o'clock, but it could be five.
Well, yeah.
Would there be a preference?
Well, if we could get an hour start with all, all four board members and then have one peel off for the PTO meeting, that might be the best use of time.
So are we scheduled to start at five?
So I'm looking, um.
Well, let me, let me see.
Okay.
What we can do. So if we started at five-
I have it down that we start at five.
You, you had it down for five?
Five, yeah.
I did.
I thought it might be five.
So February tenth, negotiations.
We need, we need a full hour, we need more than that, right? Because it takes fifteen minutes to get over there.
Well, it, we'll do forty-five minutes with four board members and then three will stay on-
Oh, okay.
For the balance of the working session, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then while we're on that, there's, the Tuesday is Central School PTO and Wednesday is Chamberlain. I'm happy to do the Central School because I can't do the Wednesday one because there's the Vermont School Board Association meeting, another Wednesday lost.
What's the date on that?
On the twelfth.
Well, there, it's Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, all at six-thirty. Rick Marcot's on, Rick Marcot's on Tuesday.
So Martin, if you could do Central on Tuesday? Dan, if you could do Chamberlain on Wednesday?
We'll double check.
That'd be great.
I don't get back until late Wednesdays.
Yep, so that's six-thirty, Dan.
I mean, I'm doing Monday.
That's the one on the twelfth, because there are two of them here for Chamberlain in this. Just a little bit of a week or so of each other.
Uh, it's the twelfth, and its budget in fifth grade transition starts at six-thirty at Chamberlain, twelve. Yep.
All right, so we have those covered. All right. Are we set on the agenda for the nineteenth? Sounds like we are. All right, we'll move on to future agenda items.
So as I said, I'll try to, I don't know if everybody's listening, I'll try to do what I can on the social network and at least give you a little bit of an update. Because I did have a...
Is there a person presenting, but Roland Grant, or just...
Uh, right now, right now, we've got, it's slated. And again, we're wanting to confirm that with the high school staff. That's not yet confirmed completely, so that, that may, if it doesn't, it may have to get pushed to the next one if, if I don't, I don't get feedback.
And that, the trip to New York will have been completed by then, right?
Yep, mm-hmm. So again, I'm not sure, we're trying to confirm that. Do you know, Meg, off the top of your head, with...
I almost think it needs to be moved.
To the next one? So we're waiting to hear whether or not it's a go for this, the nineteenth, or it has to be moved to the next.
Right.
And I think it is in part complicated by the trip a little bit and the feedback. So we'll let you know. Right now, it's on there, not sure. But it would be a presentation, that was your question, Julie? Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for future agenda items?
I would like to put down there the policy consideration for performance evaluation.
All right. We'll look at the minutes for the meetings of January sixth. Any changes? Seeing none, those are accepted. The minutes of January eighth. Seeing none, those are accepted. Uh, the minutes of January twenty-second. Give everybody a minute? Seeing none, those are accepted, and the minutes of January twenty-seventh. And seeing none, those are accepted. Yeah. Any comments on EP orders twenty-eight and turning points number seventy-seven? Yes, John?
I do want to apologize to the board. I, I thought that that award to PACT had been paid. And we, we give an annual subsidy to PACT of $1,500. That check was paid. When I went to do your budget for analysis, I looked and I couldn't find it. So I conveyed to Suzie that it wasn't your intent to wait six months. She and Steve knew they had the, the plaque. And they thought that's all they're getting. So it's kind of turned out that they can...
Oh, they got double awards.
They can do three more dinners with the money, so...
Great, well, that's good.
That's what happened.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Announcements?
Yep. Again, we've already covered the PTO meetings for the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. For the public that are listening, though, that we do have PTO meetings at the respective schools. So we'll be at Orchard on the tenth at six o'clock. I will be, and it sounds like a board member will be joining me as well. On the eleventh is at Rick Marcot, that's at six-thirty. And the twelfth is at Chamberlain at six-thirty as well. February thirteenth is Vermont Rights Day, and schools will be participating in the seven minutes of writing. And then a reminder to those of you who are participating in the, in your, either your reelection broadcast is on February twentieth. And also to the public on Channel seventeen, our budget presentation information will be, we're currently scheduled for five-twenty-five to do that. And so, and then the, you folks go after, right, Julie? You're after us, and Dan? Yep. And the only other thing is just in your packet, and, you know, just I had included in your packet kind of the information around kind of the legislative activity, and with the idea that it could possibly be picked and choose to, to send. But at this point, I think the general consensus, there's a lot of movement going on in the legislature, although I think the formation of some of your thinking and decision-making and conversation, I do think some of those points might be helpful just to, to look at. Certainly, there's a bigger conversation happening, you know, within the Superintendent's Association around some of the implications and budget factors that are currently in play